All right, if everyone is ready, I will call to order the Frazier Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting of October seventh, two thousand twenty-one to order. First item on the agenda, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. As soon as we have our flag up. Thank you very much, Paul. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which begins, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a roll call. And if you would please, for the members, when your name is called, if you would please remember to identify your location with city, county and state.
Member Burley.
Member Burley, your microphone is muted at the moment.
Sorry about that. It would be Macomb, Frazier and Michigan.
Member Tremonte.
Tom, Macomb, Michigan, Macomb County, Frazier and. That's it.
Thank you, Member Farina.
Fraser, Frank Farina, Frazier, Macomb County, Michigan.
Member Logan.
Logan, Macomb County, Frazier, Michigan.
Member Menendez.
Macomb County, Frazier, Michigan.
And Chair Steinbeck.
I am in attendance from City of Frazier, Macomb County, Michigan. There is a quorum to conduct business. This meeting is being held via Zoom. To ensure that those wishing to observe and or participate in the meeting have the opportunity to do so. The public can participate via Zoom application. Internet access via the Zoom website and or via telephone using the Zoom telephone numbers and the meeting ID. The public will be able to hear the zoning board appeals member. Members and will be permitted to speak for up to five minutes during the public participation portions of the meeting. Please note that the callers viewers will automatically be muted and must remain muted until called upon to speak by the chair. We thank you for your attendance this evening and hope that you find this platform a safe and amicable way to conduct the meetings. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, motion by Farina, supported by Menendez to approve the minutes of the September second meeting.
The agenda.
Or for the agenda, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to approve the agenda of the October seventh meeting. Thank you for the correction. Sorry for that. Is there any discussion on that motion? Recognizing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. reveal, if you would like to take roll roll call vote on that motion.
There, Member Burley.
Yes.
Member Tremonte.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Menendez.
Yes.
Chair Steinbeck.
Yes. That motion passes, the agenda is approved as presented. Petitioners and members of the audience, the zoning board appeals as herein created as a body of limited powers. Where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the Frazier Code. The board shall have the powers in passing upon appeals to vary or modify any of the provisions of the code relating to the construction. Structural changes in equipment or alteration of buildings or structures. So that the spirit of the code shall be observed, public safety secured and substantial justice done. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the code shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all the following facts and conditions exist. First, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. And or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property. That do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. Second, that such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. Similar to that, similar to similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district and in the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be sufficient to warrant a variance. Third, that the authorizing of such a variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties. And will not materially impair the intent and purpose of the Frazier Code or the public interest. And finally, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property. Or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought. Is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable. The formulation of general regulation for such condition or situation. The item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing item. And I should also note for the benefit of the petitioners, since our last meeting. We have received a resignation from one of the members of the board due to the fact that they moved out of the city. Which disqualified them to serve on the board. So right now, out of the normally seven members that are seated at the zoning board of appeals, we have six with one vacancy. In order to be successful on a variance request, you need to have a majority of the board. So four out of seven members. So your odds are slightly down this evening due to the fact that there is a vacancy on the board. I will give the petitioner the opportunity to request postponement of their item. In order to have the benefit of a full board, however, I can. Probably say with some degree of certainty that there will not be an appointment made to the vacant position. By the next meeting, so it may be some time before we get that position filled. With all of that said and done. Next item on the agenda is postponed cases, appeal number twenty-one dash oh three. Varian's request regarding the property at seventeen one five seven Anita. For appeal on an accessory structure. Is the petitioner in the room?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. reveal, if you would please give us the background information regarding this request.
Yes, so as you may recall. Last month, the board postponed this case to give the applicant time to provide some more information. About the property and to provide a plot plan of the property so that the specifics of the request could be determined. The applicant did submit additional information, including that plot plan, which you had in your packets. To to refresh the this application. Was to build a two-story accessory structure in the rear yard using approximately the footprint of the existing garage. The proposal is to demolish that existing garage. And put in that general location, a garage structure that has a second story. And a in the in its original. Configuration, this request included a full apartment and second story, so it met the ordinance definition of a dwelling unit. And the applicant was was asking the board for variances. From the ordinance stipulations that only one dwelling parcel is allowed and that an accessory building. May not be more than one story and fifteen feet in height. The revised. The revised. Proposal. I'll get to that in a minute, the plot plan is. Is here, the applicant that the applicant provided showing the location of the Sweeney Drain with relation to their house. And the image on the left is just a. A drawing of the drain itself. Highlighting the the distance there, that's that information is also on the plot plan. I believe that plot plan is what the board was asking for and it seems complete and accurate from the information that the city has. The the proposal, the proposed plans of the structure are on the screen now. Since the last meeting, the applicant has omitted the kitchen appliances. In the plan, I think without a kitchen that the this. Proposal is just underneath the ordinance definition of a dwelling unit. But to build this structure as presented, it would not require that variance. It would, it would, but it would still require a variance for the height and. And just for the height. The applicant also provided. Elevation to their house. And I think they they can fill in this narrative, but I think the assertion here is that the. Configuration of the back elevation of the house complicates their ability to. To put an addition in the backyard, which was, I think, one possibility that was talked about last time. And with that, I will answer any questions you have.
You, Mr. reveal, are there any questions for the administration?
Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Of that the aerial view you have the from satellite. I guess it's satellite view. I can't see what's under that red line. How many cars are parked in that driveway?
Oops, excuse me. I could move the red line in just one second.
It's like three.
Yeah, there's three.
I agree, there's there's three cars, cars under the inner red line now.
And the the one in the lower. Left corner of that property, is that to the another? Property or is that? Side to that same property?
I guess that is in front of the property that we are talking about. It's sort of parked over the sidewalk, but that the. The applicant's property is is this lot, if you can see my cursor all the way to the to the red line.
Yep. Okay.
Are there other questions for the administration? Recognizing no questions for the administration at this time, does the petitioner have anything they wish to add to their application or to the administration's presentation?
I don't believe you do. I believe everything was, everything was pretty much, I hope to be clarified in the letter that we wrote to the. The zoning board of appeals members back on September fourteenth explained. Why we can't add on to the back of the house and how the easement of the Sweeney Drain restricts from adding on to the west side of the house. Like I said, this is not to be used as an apartment, it's just to be used, I. I have a mobility issue, I have a condition, I've been promised twenty years, things are getting worse, I have to ambulate with either crutches or a transport chair and. Because our house has six levels on it, it's just getting almost impossible to do and we thought it would be easier. They have one area to go to during the day, they'll be easy for me to to navigate around. That was the reason you're hoping to do this.
Okay, are there questions for the petitioner?
I have one.
Go ahead, Ms. Menendez.
With ambulating, how how is that going to work in inclement weather? When it's snow, heavy, heavy snowfall, rain to move from the garage into the house. Looks like a somebody.
Somebody has. Somebody has to help me on a twenty-four hour basis, my husband, my daughters are here a lot of times and. Somebody will be able to get me from the house to the garage, either by the transport chair. Or help me navigate with the crutches, whatever, whatever is easiest to do at that time, I. The doctor, I have, I have medical documentation, if you needed to see it from my doctor saying I need attendant care twenty-four seven.
Okay, and as far as the kitchen removal, that has been removed from the plans, correct?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
I didn't have a question, what is that area with the double sink in it?
It was just, it was just a sink, basically, we can take that out if that's what we need to do, it's just basically a sink to wash hands or whatever.
Well, wouldn't you just? Throw, if you need, if you want to make it into a kitchen, throw a. A stove and a refrigerator on on a wall.
We don't need to do that, my husband, like I said, he can ambulate back and forth and bring, you know, prepare the food in our house now, if he has to and bring it to where I'm at.
Have you looked at a lift? For your current house, they have these lifts that. Attached to the wall, yes.
We can't do that because part of my condition is, not only do I have a condition with my leg, my nerve condition, but I also have, she had her kneecap. Which my leg sticks out completely straight, I cannot bend my leg, so. There's no way I could get a left lift to go up and down the stairs with the way my leg is.
Okay.
Question.
Mr. Organ, is that you? Go ahead.
No, you just, ma'am, you just said you you can't use a lift, a lift to get up and down the stairs?
I can't, no, not because my leg sticks out straight, I cannot bend my leg at all.
How are you going to get upstairs if if this is approved then?
Because my husband, right now, I have to ambulate the stairs by going up my back end, I have to go up and down the steps, that way it's very difficult for me to get up and down the steps. And the reason we wanted to do this because we thought if I could just traverse the steps one time a day to get up there and one time at night. It would prevent from having to ambulate or try to get up and down the steps several times a day, which is just too hard to do. The way our house is set up, there's not one level that has everything on it that I need for the activities of daily living. That's the only reason we wanted to try to do this, I mean, we're just trying to make my life simpler, I've been dealing with this condition for. Almost twenty years and things are getting worse and there's nothing they can do, I mean, I've tried all kinds of procedures and there's nothing they can do to help me. I was just trying to make.
How many, how many steps are in one of your floors right now, from your lower to the upper? Because to be honest, I, I tried to come there twice yesterday and today and nobody answered the door.
I had no idea, I've had a couple of doctor's appointments this week, I don't, had no idea anybody was coming over, I had no idea. I never heard anybody knocking on the doors, I don't know what happened, I know Tuesday I had several doctor's appointments and I had a couple yesterday, so I'm not.
Three cars in the driveway, but anyhow, how many steps are in the, from your, from your lower to the upper?
There's probably five or six from the family room up to the the kitchen level and then there's probably eight from the kitchen up to where the beds are. And then there's another eight to go up to the next level, I mean, there's like six levels on our house and. It's almost impossible to 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 navigate anymore.
So you you'd be going up the these steps in the in the apartment? Once in the morning and once at night?
Right, just have somewhere, somewhere to go where it's just easier for me to get around, that's all, that's the only intent, I mean. I'm not using it as an apartment, as I'm not sure that, I mean, I know it's classified as that, but I wasn't using it as an apartment, I just wanted to have a place to go during the day, that's all, to make my life easier. Things are getting more difficult and like I said, I've got medical documentation, if you need to see it, I'm happy to provide it. With the condition that I have and you know why it's so hard for me to get around.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But if you converted the first floor of the garage to living area?
Pardon me?
What if you converted the first floor of the garage to living area?
I don't really want to give up my garage either, I mean, I would like to keep a garage and if you, if you separate off, separate the garage, there's really not going to be any room to to move or do anything, really.
Because I know, I note in the picture that there are three, three, maybe four cars on your property that are not in the garage.
Right, I understand that, but. I'd like to keep part of the garage just for storage or if I, if we need to put a car in there, I mean, that's the reason that I'd like not to give up the garage and if you, if you separate the portion for the garage, there's really not going to be any room left.
I have a question.
Mr. Tremonte.
I'm trying to read through this, what about a bathroom, did you eliminate the bathroom?
No, we were going to keep the bathroom and I believe that was still on the plans, I believe it was.
On the left side, Joe.
Okay, okay. I was looking for it in script, I meant in print, okay, right.
On the plans you sent us, what is the designation L mean in the designation F?
I think the F is for furnace, I believe.
L would be linen closet. F would be furnace.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions for the petitioner. So on the plot plan that was provided. The easement, overall easement width is indicated as being forty feet, do you know how much of that is on your property?
Well, let me, my daughter can, it's forty feet from the center on each side of the drain, so it's technically an eighty foot easement. And as far as how much of it is on our property, Julie, can you tell? I know we had to get up, we had to get it up permission from the county just to put a fence up, but because that was an ad permanent structure, they, it, the fence is actually in the easement. So that's a big portion of our our second lot that we have.
Well, it's ten foot from the house. And it's, the lot is eighty feet and it looks to be like. Twenty feet.
All right, let me, let me do it a different way, so so adding up the dimensions on the plan. It appears that the easement is twenty feet onto your property, would you agree with that if the dimensions are correct?
Hold on just a second, let me verify.
All right.
I verified the distance from the house.
My daughter verified the distance from the house to the easement, which is how much, Julie?
Just ten foot on, ten foot on the plan you gave us.
From our, from the side of our house, there's ten feet from our house to where the easement starts from the drain. So there's ten feet on the west side of the house from the, from where the end of our house is to the drain easement. Like I said, there's an eighty foot total easement on the drain and there's forty feet from the center on each side, so my daughter mapped that out in the plot plan.
All right, let's see if you agree with me. So the plan shows a nine foot driveway, it shows five feet from the driveway to the east side of the house, it shows the houses being thirty-six point five feet wide and it shows the easement ten feet away from the west side of the house. That's a total of forty point five feet, or to me, sixty point five feet. If those dimensions are correct, that means that the easement is nineteen point five or twenty feet of the east. Excuse me, west of the property. Those numbers seem to be correct.
Just one second, please, does that sound about right, Julie?
I will have to trust your addition on that, but all dimensions listed on this plot plan are accurate.
All right. The garage shown on this plan, is that the new garage or the existing garage?
That would be the new garage.
Okay. So if that new garage is three feet from the east property line and is twenty-eight feet wide. That means it's thirty-one feet, thirty-one foot from the east property line.
Okay.
And if the easement is sixty feet away from the east property line, that means that you have. Basically another twenty-nine feet. From the proposed garage footprint to the edge of the easement.
Okay, I'll trust you on that, okay.
So the question is, why, based on your stated hardship? Would you build a second floor on the garage when you have just as much space on the ground west of the garage?
Okay, as we explained and some of the pictures that we submitted. The way the garage, the way the house is built. If you were to add in addition out of the back of the house, the two lower windows, the family room is partly underground. And the windows on the upper level, because because that level is partly underground, they're not the same level. As like a two-story addition would be and. You would not have any egress, when would you be blocking any way of getting out from those bedrooms or the family room? You'd have, and there's a cantilever also that extends from the back of the house. And I'm not sure how they would address that a builder, but. You can't, you would have no way of getting out of the family, there would be, there are no other family room windows except the two on the bottom. And then the two on the top, like I said, you'd be blocking off any kind of egress. Level as well.
I didn't want to cut you off, but I believe you misunderstood my question. The question was to build a wider garage. And just have a one-story building. So that you didn't have stairways to get up to that space that you want to have.
Well, I would still like to enjoy part of having a backyard and. From what I understand, there's some type of a, an ordinance saying that you can only have so many. Footage of properties on the, depending on how big your lot is, and I really would like not to take away my whole backyard. And like I said, just by having to traverse the steps, you know, once in the morning and once in the evening would simplify my life greatly. Right now, it's multiple times a day and I I can't do it, I've got. My left side is starting to bother me and I'm just having a lot of problems, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you would grant this appeal.
Ms. Rebecca, and that's part of the concern that I have with regard to this request in that. The board needs to find that there is a hardship related to the land. Not to the tenants of the land, but to the land. As you have indicated here this evening, your condition is getting worse. And I'm sorry to hear that. All of us are aging to the point that we can't do quite often what we used to do. And that this, quite honestly, for someone to make the argument that I need to build a second floor. Onto an existing one-story building because I have a mobility problem. Is rather counterintuitive, it it doesn't quite honestly make sense. And my concern is that your condition unfortunately may continue to deteriorate such that even the once a day traversing of the stairway up to the upper level of the garage. Is going to become impossible. And that. That hardship goes away because you won't be able to use the stairs at all. That's why our findings and the statute requires that our findings be that there's a hardship running with the land. That causes the need for the, for the variance. Because tenants are only temporary, the land is permanent. I will, or to me, my house will outlive me. Quite honestly, your house may outlive you, that is typically the the tendency and the probability. So it's not just the condition of the tenants, it's a condition of the land. And quite honestly, your your house or your lot, even with the encroachment of the easement. Meets the standard size even with the easement encroachment. So it's not that the easement is causing any hardship on this property. That isn't felt by all the people down the street that have sixty-foot wide lots because. You have an eighty-foot wide lot, sixty foot of which is fully usable. And in fact, those other people that have a sixty-foot wide lot, because of the required setbacks, have even lesser land to build on.
Can I, can I interrupt one minute, please? I thought, I thought there was an ordinance saying that you can only have so many, like footage of buildings. I thought there was an ordinance saying that you can only have so many, like, footage of buildings on your property, depending on how big your property is, and it was better to go up rather than out, because if we go, if we head to the garage, we're not going to really have any backyard at all, pretty much, and isn't that taking the, doesn't that affect that ordinance that says you can only have so many square footage of, you know, accessory structures or houses or whatever on your property, depending on how big your lot is? And since we don't have, you know, since we kind of lost twenty feet because of the easement, we're pretty much just, the whole lot is going to just be a building, I guess, between the house, and then if you extend the garage over, which I was hoping that I'd like to keep our backyard. You know, I'm just, like I said, I know, I'm not trying to, and I, I know I've seen other two-story garages in the city of Fraser, and I, I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to do this, because I, it would make my life a lot easier, and I, I know there's other, I know that there was one built off a Garfield just a few years ago, a two-story garage, and I don't understand why we can't do that. It'll make my life easier, even if, as you say, as I'm getting older, if things get to the point where I can't use it down the road, I mean, so be it, but at least for now, I could use it, and you know, it'd be much easier for me. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know if you can visualize the condition I'm in, but it's, things are not good, and if I can make my life a little bit easier during the day, it would just be immense help for me. Like I said, I've got doctor, I've got medical documentation explaining why I need twenty-four-seven lieutenant care, and I'm just hoping that we'd be able to do this. It would just make things a lot easier for me, and that's all I'm asking. Basically, this is just a height, a height restriction variance, I guess, or appeal, and I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that you would allow us to do this.
So Ms. Vivecky, y- you are correct that there is a maximum lot coverage overall in the zoning district. There's also a maximum rear yard coverage by accessory buildings. So if you exceeded those, it would require a variance. There's also a height limit to one story for which you're asking for a variance.
I understand.
But my, my, I guess my point is, is that you might have a better shot at asking for an area variance because of a condition, a mobility condition and the need for unified, single-floor space, than it would be to ask for a second story on a building because of a mobility condition, because you can't make it upstairs. There's lacking some logic in that argument, quite honestly.
I just, I don't understand, I mean, I'm just not sure then, how comes Fraser, and I'm not, not trying to be rude or disrespectful, but I know there are two-story garages in Fraser, and I'm not understanding, I mean, obviously, would have had a, have gone to the zoning board of appeals as for variance as well, correct? I just don't understand why, why we're, we're not able to do this, I guess.
Because they may have had a condition of hardship that ran with their land. They may have, had, had an extremely large easement that precluded them from building the allowable accessory buildings that they were permitted on one story. I don't know the cases that you're referring to, I don't know the properties that you're referring to. But in your case, the question is, is what hardship runs with the land? Doctors' notes, conditions of the occupants don't count. Alright, are there other questions for the petitioner? Recogni- is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard regarding this request? This is appeal number, excuse me, twenty, or oh-five, twenty-one dash oh-five. Is there anyone in the public that wish to be heard regarding this request?
Mr. Chair, there's no one else in the meeting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rebeal, have we received any written correspondence to the public hearing notices?
We have received none.
Once again, this is appeal number twenty-one dash oh-five. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard regarding this request?
I have a question.
Does it need to be addressed in the public hearing?
No.
Okay. Alright, recognizing no one else wishing to be heard regarding this item, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up to the board. Mr. Farina, you had a question?
Yes, I'm unaware of any second story building that, outside buildings. As a matter of fact, the first, my very first case, when we got on, I got on the ZBA, was somebody who did that. And they, they, we made them cut off the top story and cut through the load-bearing rafters because he was not allowed to have a, a two-story building, and he had to cut off the top of his roof.
Could I possibly, could I possibly provide anybody with addresses? I, I can find the addresses where the two-story garages are, if that would be helpful at all, as far as our case.
No, I would, like Mark said, it depends, depended on what they had for their, for, for a, for a reason for a variance. My, my concern is this, that your condition is going to get worse, and you, you're, you're going to have to move out, and whoever moves in is going to turn that into a rented, rented property.
You know what, I, I, I don't plan on moving. I, I, I really, we've lived here forty-two years. I, my intent is not to move. That's why I was trying to make things easier for me, and if anything, one of the kids would probably buy it. I don't, I not, would not be putting it up for sale. That's not what my plan is. Like I said, we've lived here since we got married. And it's not my intent to move. That's why I was just trying to make things easier for me. I really, I love living in the city of Fraser, and I, I was just trying to make my life easier, because I, it is, it is difficult. I don't know if you can imagine how hard it is to ambulate when you've got steps in your house, and you just want to be able to have a place to go to where there aren't any barriers. That's all I'm asking. I, I mean, I said, and I didn't want, I know there's, I know that we can do the area variance, like, you know, was requested, but I don't, I don't want to give up my whole backyard. I, I really would like to keep my backyard. I mean, I like sitting in the backyard sometimes. I don't want to have, you know, nowhere to go. I mean, that, that's the reason we were requesting to go up rather than out.
Could I, could I say something?
Of course.
Your, what is your, do you know the width of your garage right now?
I believe it, if I can look for one second, I can tell you. It was a twenty-four feet, I believe it was twenty-four feet.
Okay, I own some apartments, and the studios are only fourteen by twenty-six, and that has a dining area, a living room, and a bathroom. Why couldn't you cut that in half? Your, your garage right now, and then you could put a garage on one side and the living area on the other side, and even if you needed a little more, you could blow out that outside wall. That way you'd have storage, and you'd have your first floor unit.
So it would only be like eleven feet by twenty-two feet then, deep? Because I, right now, like I said, the garage is, I believe, I think it's twenty-four feet wide, right? So it'd be twelve by twelve by twenty-two feet, which
Instead of having a two-car garage, you could just blow out the, I don't know if that would be the west side, the west side, at whatever feedage you needed to add to your, you know, and that way you'd have storage for a car or for your stuff, and then you'd also have a, a first floor place that you could have a bathroom and a, a living room, and that would be plenty of the size, I believe.
Well, the transport chair takes, you need a little bit of room to navigate. I don't know if that would even be big enough, and like I said, I really was hoping to keep part of my, you know, some of the, some of the backyard available. I didn't want to use
Well, you, you still have, even without, even if it, you blew it out to your house, the length of your house, you still have a hundred and twenty feet by thirty feet. I mean, all the way, the, the whole thirty feet of your property line doesn't have anything there, right?
Well, you're saying extend the garage out to, so it lines up with the back of the house, which is
You would still have thirty feet by a hundred and twenty feet, right, of grass in backyard.
That, you know, the, the brush and it's not, is not used, because the brush on the drain is so, so extensive. It wouldn't be usable for anything else, so.
So all I'm saying is, if you, if you were just to blow out a couple feet more, okay, like I said, our studio apartments are fourteen by twenty-six, and that's plenty for a living room, a bathroom, a kitchen, that's everything. I know it's a little cramped, you know, but that way you wouldn't need a variance.
But I need open floor space too, to navigate.
It is, it would be, it would be four, thirteen or fourteen wide. Fourteen feet is, is a lot of space. By twenty, twenty, whatever the depth of the garages.
But like my daughter just brought up, the chair, when I have to sit in the chair, my leg sticks straight out, so you're talking about several feet of the chair. It's not, not like a regular wheelchair where people sit with their, their knees folded. My leg is completely straight out. I have a, I have an accessory unit on my chair that prevents my leg from bending, and it rests on there, it rests on there, so trying to navigate around that area is going to be, is going to be very difficult.
It's, it's not any different than your plan up top, because your plan on top is twenty-eight, and you got a bedroom, and you got a dining room, and you got the stairway. It's really no different than the plan that you even submitted.
Well, we were hoping to keep, I mean, if I have to keep the walls down, I won't put any walls up there if it makes it easier. I, I don't, if that, if that, like I said, I, I don't know. I just, I need, I just need to have some place to go, that's all. And I wanted something a little bit larger. It's hard to navigate with a chair. Obviously, the bathroom can't be the regular, I need to help with the bathroom. I can't just, you know, get into the bathroom door. I need to have room for that. We have to use the chair to get in on those days. I'm then going to, the bathroom's going to be big enough to accommodate a chair that's probably, you know, sticking out five, six feet, because I, I have to have room to get in there and turn it around and everything else, so I'm not sure how that would work.
Well, like I said, if you, if you cut down that garage, because you make it one car, that would be only twelve feet, and you'd have sixteen, and then you could add whatever you want on the other side of the garage, and would give you plenty of room, I believe.
If, if I may, this is Beverly's daughter. A twelve-foot width room would not really allow for the proper turning radius for a chair when you account for any kind of furniture. And considering that my mom's leg is extra sensitive, any kind of impact to either a wall or a piece of furniture is going to cause an extreme burning pain.
Well, it doesn't have to be twelve feet. You can do twenty feet wide. It would just keep on extending into your backyard.
I think the concern with that is that if you extend all the way, even if you extend as far as we can go, the part of the backyard we're left with is all on easement, and we wouldn't be able to do anything else with that piece of land. It would just be an open piece of land.
Mark can't hear you. Stimek, you're muted.
Thank you. At this point in time, we've closed a public hearing, and it's back up to the board. Is there a motion to be made? The chair will make a motion to deny the request twenty-one dash oh-five regarding the property at one seven one five seven Anita. Based of, the basis for the, for the motion for denial is that petitioner has failed to show that there's a hardship running with the land that would justify the variance. And it appears that there are numerous alternatives that would be available to the petitioner without the need potentially of a variance, or by a lesser variance that would overcome the hardship running with the tenants.
Second.
A motion by the chair, second by member Farina, to deny appeal number twenty-one dash oh-five. Is there any discussion on that motion? There ain't no discussion. Mr. Rebeal, roll call vote?
Member Burley.
Agreed.
Member Trementy.
Agree.
Member Farina.
Agreed.
Member Logan. Member Menendez. And Chair Stimek.
I voted in favor of the motion to deny. That motion does pass. The request is denied. Ms. Vivecky, I would suggest that you consult potentially with an architect that may be able to come up with a plan. I was doing some rough calculations, and you could quite possibly build a substantial addition onto your existing garage that would be on the floor level, that would not require that you traverse stairs, and would still be in compliance with all of the ordinance requirements, not requiring any variances. And I suggest that you investigate that as a possibility to provide you with some enjoyment or better enjoyment of your property.
May I make a suggestion as well?
I didn't see who that was, but go ahead.
This is Beverly's daughter.
Oh, yes.
So going forward, I would like to suggest that if your concern is mainly with the land, that you don't proceed to compare old age with a disability, a legitimate disability. It comes across as insensitive, disingenuous, and a bit presumptuous to think you understand what my mom is going through right now. But that is all.
I, I, I do appreciate your concerns. I, I, once again, the intent was not to diminish your mother's condition. I, I greatly do feel for that. However, in the terms of the zoning board of appeals, those are not items we can consider.
Understood, but can you at least apologize for making that very, very insensitive comparison?
I, I, I do apologize. I don't recall the comparison you're referring to. But
That comparison thing that you're all suffering from old age as we go on, and somewhat thinking of something that it's equivalent to disability, and that's very insensitive. An apology would make a, make a big difference here, please.
A- and I do apologize. I, I'm not saying that my aches and pains and inabilities to move about the way I used to is, is equivalent to your mother's condition. But the, those conditions, once again, are, are things that are of the occupant of the property, and our task, our, our charge in granting a variance is to find things that are with the land.
Completely understood. I would recommend going forward, if this should ever come up again with someone else, that you stick strictly to the land use and not comment on a disability or condition, please.
I would be happy to if the applicant didn't make that the basis of their appeal.
That's completely understood, but once again, it's insensitive to make presumptions about this, this subject, especially these days.
Okay, I, I appreciate the concern, and once again, apologize if, if, if that remark offended you or your mother. Moving on to the next item, as far as new public hearings, I'm not aware of any. The next item is new business of the board. The next item is new business of the board. I am not aware of any there. Mr. Reveal, with the resignation of then-member Hunt, is there anything that we have to officially do in order to fill his position?
No, the, the city administration has opened the call for applicants. And it, it's been a while since there has been a vacancy in a while as relative terms in, in Frazier. Just given everyone's relatively, everyone in the administration's relative recent arrival here, myself included. So there's nothing that you need to do at this point when there are applicants to review. The city administration will propose some. And they will be interviewed. I think I think who interviews them is still a matter of discussion. I think as Chair, Chair Steinbeck, you might be involved in that. But as far as the board, there's nothing official to be done until we have some applicants for the vacancy.
All right, thank you. I, I guess for, for your benefit or benefit of others. It has been the procedure, I won't say policy, but procedure in past years that applicants for a particular board, whether it be the zoning board of appeals or the planning commission, I can't speak for other boards. But it, it has been that a, a interview, so to speak, and or recommendation to city council on vacancies be done by the board. That doesn't have to, there's no statutory requirement for that. But that at least has been the procedure in the past with vacancies on the board. And there would be no problem in doing that again, should city council wish to or administration wish to do that.
Sure. And I, I think that, that is, that was anticipated. I guess I was just referring to until, until we have applicants to recommend or to consider, yes.
Next item on the agenda is planning commission liaison member report, Mr. Farina.
We had no planning commission meeting this month, so there's nothing to report. Is there anything planned for either of our boards for next month?
I, I can say confidently that there will not be a zoning board meeting next month because the I don't have any complete applications and the notice requirement, given newspaper deadlines is passed. Planning commission, there still could be, but that said, I don't, I'm not aware of any projects that are in the process of applying.
My last time in reminding everybody, I will not be here for either meeting should one be required in the first week of November.
All right, thank you. Next item on the generally agenda is public participation. Is there anyone in the public that wish to address the board any matter on or not on the agenda this evening?
I believe we have no one from the public in the meeting anymore.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the September second, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Is there a motion?
A motion to brief by Burley.
A motion by Burley, second by Logan, was it? Thank you. To approve the minutes of the September second zoning board appeals meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to abstain since I was not at that meeting. On the vote.
All right, you can, you can do that when your name is called.
Thank you.
That would be an appropriate action. If there's no further discussion, Mr. Reveal, the vote.
Yes, Member Burley. Member Chmenti. Member Farina. Member Logan. Member Menendez.
I will be abstaining.
And Chair Steinbeck.
Vote I. Motion approves, meaning or the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is member comments and items of interest. Does anybody have anything they wish to bring forth this evening? I heard Mr. Farina first, so if you would, please go ahead.
Yes, on Sundays, if you're interested, St. Malakis is selling Coney dogs for two dollars. It's a fundraiser for the parish. It's, we have Coney dogs, fries, hop. So if you're going to watch a football game, come down and get your Coney dogs are very good. I'm sorry. The hours are from twelve to three.
I don't know who else. Mr. Burley, you had a question or comment?
I was just wondering if there's any news on in-person meetings.
I have nothing new to report on in-person meetings.
Are there any other members having an item that they wish to bring forward?
I do.
Mr. Chomani.
This Sunday from three to six at the Knights of Columbus, John F. Kennedy, we're having all you can eat spaghetti dinner. Kelly Road between fourteen and, and Girl Speck Highway. It's all you can eat and good food, too.
So we can, we can get some Coney dogs in St. Malakis, then head over to, to JFK to get spaghetti to go with it.
That's right. For fifteen dollars, seventeen dollars, it'd be done.
That's right. All right. Anyone else have any items? Hearing none. Was that Ms. Menendez? Did you have something?
No, I said none for me. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I mean, the motion.
A motion by Chomani, second by Farina for adjournment. We can do this by voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, meeting is adjourned. All of you have a safe time and we will see you probably in a couple of months, hopefully in person if we can. Everyone have a great night.
Take care.